Pledge of limitations to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, all. Welcome to the Town of Rutland Select Board Meeting. This is for Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We have present here Select Board Members Don Chaffee, Mary Ashcroft, and Sharon Russell. We have on the phone, Select Board Member John Paul Fagnant. And we will just briefly go through a couple of things. Approval of the orders, I think. Sharon and I have signed them.
I'll bring them over to him.
Okay, thank you. Don needs to take a look at them. Thank you. All right, so next is the approval of the minutes of the August thirty-first Select Board Meeting. Don't move.
Motion seconded to approve the minutes of August thirty-first. Any additions, deletions, corrections?
If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. There's also the September eighth set of minutes. So is there a motion to accept those? Don't move. Motion's made and seconded. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor of approving the September eighth minutes, please say aye.
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 Aye. All right, you approve the minutes. Okay, so are there any members of the public who wish to be heard, who are not already included on today's agenda? Mrs. Koolig.
You want me to go there or can I stay here?
You should go there.
I'm just following up. Because I was here on the twentieth of July, asking about zoning. You discussed it. You tasked the planning commission with drawing up some ordinances. I haven't been to a meeting since then, reviewed the minutes. Nothing has indicated that there has been any progress forward with that, so I was just questioning what the status is on that.
My recollection, Barbara, do you have? My recollection is that the Select Board indicated that they were not interested in pursuing zoning. There was some dissension to that. Is that your recollection as well, Barbara?
Yeah, yeah, and I believe you tasked us with looking at ordinances for some of the issues that were brought forward. So that is underway. It's, we've been trying to work with Vermont League of Cities and Towns with that.
Excuse me, Barbara, could you put that up a little more, please? It's hard to hear her. Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, the planning commission is slowly working on this. We'll have to figure out what statute allows for ordinances. You know, being a Dillon rural state, we can only do so much. We can only do what the state allows us to do. For instance, you know, we started down a path of putting in a helicopter and small aircraft ordinance, but I think we overstepped ourselves with what we had, just in the early drafts. Because we probably only can do something that affects noise. So there's a little bit of research involved with what we can do under statute and being a Dillon rural state, meaning towns, municipalities can't do anything more than what the state prescribes, actually puts in statute that they can do.
Okay, so that review continues on a number of different fronts.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sure. And then I also wanted to, because, and I was going to bring it to show you the difference between the two permits, the fireworks permits, for people to get if they want to discharge fireworks. Jack left it at the store, so I don't have it, but I know that the permit that I got last year for the Fourth of July, it was a one-page permit and it pertained basically to backyard fireworks. Now, the permit that is, that we need to get through the town is a state one, and it's three pages long, and it's basically set up for big displays.
Right.
So it's really, you know, kind of daunting and kind of, you know, oh my gosh, you know, I'm not having the magnitude of fireworks as what this is geared for. So I was just wondering if you were planning to go back to your simple.
Well, see, we're not, we don't have the authority at this point. The State Supreme Court in August of last year ruled that the only allowable fireworks were those for public display, and that's why you saw the three-page permit, because that's a public display permit. So at this point, fireworks are not allowed except for public display. Therefore, you're going to have to wait and see what the legislature does, if anything, in January, because they could address what the Supreme Court found was fairly confusing language and contradictory language in the statute. We don't feel we have any authority to do anything right now, so.
So if I was to want to do something in my backyard, I can't?
Well, not unless you go through the process for a public display.
Okay, so I can do the public display one, okay. Because that's, Jack wanted me to ask about that. And then, my third, I always come with three. It seems like three.
That's okay.
This is for Mike. Mike? Mike Rowe, hello.
Okay, go ahead.
It's just, I brought my grandson over to Dewey Field to play tennis, actually, hit the tennis ball and chase it more than hit it and whatnot, and pickleball and whatnot. And I noticed at the back of the back fence, it's all overgrown and whatnot, so I was just wondering if there's a plan to...
We'll take care of it. It was worse last year. He chopped it all down and it's grown back, so we'll get to it eventually. But it was twenty times worse, and he went by and cut each and every piece of it to go out. It's just grown back.
So is Dewey Field not being used as much anymore? Because the baseball diamond kind of looked like it was growing in on it.
Let it, because we will get there in like two weeks to redo it so that it's fresh in the spring.
Okay, and any thoughts of, you know, because I said, boy, it's a nice area over here. Is there any walking trails around? Is there room for walking trails over there?
Part of that, there's maybe like a quarter mile loop. It's not very big what we own, as far as, because we own like kind of like a horseshoe.
Yeah, it's odd.
And it's not that big. I mean, it's not that long of a property. I mean, I'm for that, but it's really, it's gonna be like walking around a parking lot.
Yeah.
It's not really that big. And there's some, there's a pretty big ravine in there, so it would be basically a loop in back. I don't even call it a loop, maybe a hundred yards that we own.
I was wondering, because when we got there, there was a car parked there and nobody else was around, and then they, then those people appeared, and I can't remember if they had bikes or not, but they must have parked there and either walked the neighborhood or what, I was wondering if there was a walking area over there.
Not to my knowledge. I don't think.
I don't remember any.
If you had any bikes, you might have gone the pipe.
There was, over on the property, there was that went from the town, what the town acquired, over to, I think, the back of the house that was there. I do remember one, but that was years ago, when we first acquired the property.
Yeah, it's like a little.
Yeah.
So it's not really?
No.
No. I was wondering if that was something, because the last time I was here, the Conservation Committee, there, you guys, you know, they presented and whatnot, and I was wondering if that was something that they could be tasked with if, but I know that you kind of put the quash to that as well.
There was a minority view on that as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we all set?
We're all set. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in. Appreciate it. Okay, anyone else who is not on the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, Madam Chair.
Okay, Howard.
Howard here, yes. I sent to you and the board an email on Friday about Thistle Hill Place, the new street. We got to come up with a street name for this, whatever it's going to be. I've talked with all of the three property owners up there. They all would like to see it named Thistle Hill Place. The name Thistle Hill Place passed the E nine-one-one test. The closest town with Thistle Hill in it is over in Pomford, that's over by Woodstock. So I mean, it passed all the tests and the owners up there would like to go with that name, so it's, whatever it is, it's this name, whatever it's going to be, it has to be approved by the Select Board. That's what I'm asking for.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Well, JP just beat you to it. He moved to approve. What's your?
Well, that's a fine thing, since he was the one that couldn't pronounce it last time. I'll second the motion.
Motion's made and seconded to approve E nine-one Thistle Hill Place. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 JP? I couldn't hear you if you voted. All right, thank you.
Can you turn that up just a little more?
Yeah, we're turning up the volume some, JP. Thank you. Motion carries. So you've, Howard, you've got your designated E nine-one-one road, okay?
Thank you very much. Yep.
Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public who wish to be heard and they're not otherwise on the agenda? If not, let's go down to old business. The Board to meet with representatives for the Diamond Run Mall property to discuss security options. We have on, we have on the Zoom meeting Joe Anthony and Ed Carr for the Diamond Run Mall, and there's one other person?
Michael Sternberg.
Michael Sternberg, good. All right, when we were here last, a couple of things. We did discuss security options. We do have our Chief of Police here. So that is, we'd like to hear, I think the idea was to review what your suggestions were after you had come and visited with us, and we were grateful that you did, up at the mall. And so we'd like to hear what you have to say, and I also understand that the invoice that we sent to you for the town police services have, has been paid? Has been sent. It has been sent out. Okay, very good. So I'm not sure who's presenting. Mr. Carr, we were speaking with you last time.
I will start off. Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
First, the first thing on my list was to make sure that you all knew that that check, that the invoice was received and a check was mailed today.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Since we last spoke, I just kind of wanted to give you a summary for the last two weeks. Michael Sternberg has been at the property every day during his workdays. He's there forty hours a week. Has been keeping an eye on the property, checking to make sure everything is still locked up. And I'm happy to report that in the last two weeks, we've had no intrusions into the building. So we've tightened it up considerably. We're continuing to tighten it up, using some steel reinforcements. Because as Michael and I discussed, where there's a will, there's a way, and we're trying to outsmart whoever's trying to get into the mall. We can, I can tell you that Michael has found, I would say, on average, every fourth day, evidence that somebody was trying to get in, but they have been unsuccessful. Okay, so I think there's good news in that we've tightened things up as we continue to look at some of the other measures that we want to put in. We got some numbers over the last two weeks. As a matter of fact, I just got one proposal in this morning on an option. So we're still working diligently with that. I can also tell you that when Michael has seen any tampering, it has been fixed within twenty-four hours of his finding it. Okay, so we're really trying to stay on top of it. One of the things that we're looking very hard at in getting numbers for are twenty-four hour surveillance using cameras or twenty-first century technology that we didn't have back a couple of years ago. We're looking very hard at it. We're actually working or talking to Comcast. I think we have a meeting tomorrow morning with them to see what it's going to take to activate our internet service back in tomorrow, so that we can utilize that for our surveillance. So we've made some progress. We still have more to do, but I think it's encouraging so far.
Okay, well, thank you for the update. Thank you for, you know, increasing the presence of BAI at the facility. You said that people had attempted, had attempted to get into the mall building, but is there any evidence, but they failed, which is good, but is there any evidence of any tampering, for example, on the roof? Or on the grounds? Okay.
No, we got the roof well under control. What we found, what I found when I came to Vermont a couple of weeks ago, were that the hatches had been, had been opened. The hatches not only are all closed, they're locked and secured with metal. Okay, so the only way anybody's going to get on the roof is with a ladder.
This is Joe Anthony. Good evening. Let me add just a little bit to what Ed just mentioned. So our intent is to have, we have multiple bidders, kind of bidding, especially the security cameras and the monitoring, you know, our intent is to have twenty-four hour monitoring so that, you know, obviously with motion centers, sensors and any sensors, if there is a, any entrance into the property during off or on hours for that matter, the security company then would of course notify the authorities if in fact it was a break-in, but most importantly, we'll have access to the cameras, not only through our security company, but also Ed and Mike and myself will all have access. So for instance, if a bird is flying through the interior of the mall, we're not going to call the police to have the bird. Michael can handle the bird, right? So it took a little while, a little longer than we had hoped. People are busy and it's hard to get people focused, but we have some, again, like I said, multiple contractors bidding. I fully anticipate Ed will have a selected contractor by your next meeting. Again, we will, one of the contractors made a good suggestion to us, which is, I know you're going to report back to Rutland, but I hope you're not telling them our system and exactly what the security will look like in a public forum. So specifics, I think, especially where the cameras are and how we monitor them and what the system is like, obviously, we would like to keep in private session or if we can go into executive session and just kind of run you through what our plan of attack is. But we're very confident that, yeah, I'm not confident that things won't happen, but I'm confident is we'll know about it, we'll deal with it immediately and we won't have any significant incidents where we don't know what's going on or there was break-ins unknown to us, for instance. So Ed's also going to add a bunch of signs, no trespassing signs. Again, other than kind of the folks who are going to the fieldhouse, no reason for people to be there after dark, you know, in parking or doing whatever it is that they're doing, right? So we'll also have cameras that have views into the parking fields and generally at all the entrances, exits and around the perimeter of the building. So hopefully that added a little more detail. I know Ed's taking the lead on this, but just wanted to give you a little more detail.
Thank you, Joe. This is Don Chaffee. Do you, can you give us any updates on how the pre-leasing or leasing is going and what the timeframe might be on further development of the mall?
Yeah, so a lot of interested folks, not just retail, but kind of other uses, including residential and hotels. As a matter of fact, we have a couple of calls set up tomorrow for interested parties. I do believe we'll have, we'll have more to come in the very near future. Unfortunately, all of our negotiations obviously are bound by confidentiality, so I can't give you details of who we're talking to, but I think, thank God, the pandemic, at least people are active again and construction was backed up and deals were backed up and certainly, you know, hopefully we're back to getting to some sense of normality. So things are going well. Again, obviously, a little off-plan timing, but I do think we'll have, we'll have something to report back shortly.
Thank you, Joe.
John Paul?
I'm all set.
Okay, a question that I, I'm sorry, Sharon, any question?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, a question that I have, and maybe this will be addressed when we hear back from you in a couple of weeks. You've partially addressed who will be monitoring the monitors, but then who will respond to any issue at the mall? And again, the Act two-fifty permit anticipated that you would provide that security response rather than falling on the Rutland Town Police Department. So what's your plan with that?
I think initially we'll respond, I guess depending upon who it is. Obviously, if it's somebody committing a crime and there's health and safety, you know, we would, we would call the local police.
That doesn't count that.
Excuse me?
That wasn't from our end. I don't know who that was.
Well, that doesn't address the Act two-fifty requirement, Joe. Have you taken that into consideration?
Again, we'll review Act two-fifty, but it was always, you know, I think we always had our own, you know, we had folks when the property was open and then, you know, if there was something, health and safety wise, I think we did, you know, reach out to the local authorities.
I think perhaps we'll want to review your Act two-fifty requirements.
Okay, we'll.
Yeah, and Chief Dumas advises me, the local authority was the Rutland County Sheriff's Department, and you did have a contract with them, but then that contract lapsed. So the other piece that we would like to hear in two weeks is not only the security that you, and yes, an answer to your question, we can go into executive session for security concerns. But we also will want to hear about the backup law enforcement piece.
Okay.
Anything else from the Select Board Members here or Chief Dumas?
I'm good.
There had been some talk about putting up barriers to prevent vehicles from going, first of all, from entering from the south part, the south entrance of the mall, and secondly, where the road splits and goes to the field office, you were obviously going to allow the traffic there, but not into other parts of the mall. Will we be hearing more about those barriers?
I'm still looking at that as an option. Yeah, and you will here.
Okay. All right, so we'll see you again in two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, anything further that you'd like to let us know about or any questions you have of us?
No, thank you and good evening.
Okay, thank you very much, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Okay. So, on to our regular agenda. Is there anything in particular? Sorry, I'm singling you out. Yes, indeed, yeah.
I'm with the Chamber in Economic Development. I'm on the agenda this evening.
Okay, very good. Okay, so let's skip down to new business. C, Board to Review Maintenance Request from Economic Development for Rutland Region. That would be you. Would you like to sit up here, please?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name is Tyler Richardson. I'm the Operations Director for Chamber in Economic Development, or CEDR, as we like to call ourselves. Don't have much more to add than the materials that's, or the letter that was in the materials for the agenda this evening. Essentially, we want to, we need to repave our parking lot at one-one-two Quality Lane. And in the engineering phase, portion of that, discovered that most of that parking lot is owned by the town. It's actually Sewered Road Extension Row, I believe. So I'm here tonight to thank you for letting me request repaving our, the parking lot there, and also to thank Bill for his work getting me, getting me here tonight and straightening me out and getting me figured out what I need to ask here tonight. So pretty simple request, and I'm here to answer any questions and thank you for your consideration.
Okay, I did see the, oh, here it is. Okay, it is C in your packet. It's got a, I think Byron indicated at the last meeting that, yes, it is town right-of-way. But I don't believe he raised any objections to it. Does the Highway Committee had a meeting? Just wondering if you have any input on this.
Is the request that they be allowed to pave in our right-of-way?
Yes.
I don't know how we can grant that.
Repaving, so, yeah, let's see, the majority of the parking lot is within the Sewered Road Extension right-of-way. See the shaded area on the enclosed map. Pretty substantial area. Okay, is there a motion then?
I don't have any objection to, it's just that, you know, going along with what JP said, is it legal? I mean, or are we setting a precedent? I mean, I find it kind of strange that if why is it a parking lot?
Well, it's especially strange because there's no access from the parking lot to the Sewered Road side. So there's no throughway there that connects it. There's a, there's a berm and then there's railroad tracks back there, but I've never seen anybody drive from our parking lot onto Sewered Road. So it's, it's not like it's accessed as an extension road. And so we were quite surprised to find this out in our, in our engineering planning.
Not being familiar with it, what's, what's the condition of the, of the actual ground area right now?
It's very, it's particularly bad. It's, it's, it needs to be regraded. When it rains, it pools in lots of places around the, around the lot. It needs to be repainted once it's repaved. It's just incomplete disrepair.
When you pave it, if you pave it, where is it going to drain to?
So we're looking at that right now. We're finalizing our regrading plan, but right now it all grades down into a slope into the building itself, and it pools down by the loading docks, which we can't obviously have. And so what, right now, what we're looking at is draining it to the back, where it's towards the train tracks there and into the, sort of the grassy area that's, that's behind there. And there's some drainage back there. There's some sewer drainage and things like that.
Is that on your property, all of the drainage?
Yeah.
Do you have any surveys, do you have any surveys that show the juxtaposition of this right-of-way in your facility that, that we could see? Because this isn't something, I don't think we're going to be able to answer this tonight. This is something that could have ramifications in other situations, so we're probably going to need to hear from our town attorney on this, but. But, but it would be helpful if we could see, visualize what you're talking about, the area you're talking about, if you do have a site plan.
We can certainly get you that information.
That would be awesome. You can send it to the town offices. And then we'll, we can to get with our people and get back with you at our next meeting, I would think, or, or Mary, whatever you think, um.
Yeah, gee, um. Uh, yes, I agree. I think we should hear from our town attorney, um, so we can give them a heads up on this. And we can send this along, but if you have the paving, and I'm, I'd be particularly concerned about where the drainage goes because, you know, with the railroad tracks where they are and other issues, we want to make sure that we're not dumping water on their property.
That makes sense.
With the town involved.
We'll get with our engineer and, and get these questions answered. Would it be helpful also to have pictures of the parking lot so you can see kind of the condition that it's in?
Yeah.
Mary, might this fall under one of the previous, um, presentations that we had about?
The three acre rule?
Mitigation and water.
Are you three acres there?
I don't believe that we are, but, but we're, but I'll double check that.
Yes, because the town is anticipating doing. Yeah, I know.
Well, the engineer.
Three acres. And, and one thing you should look at is whether or not, if we are able to accommodate your request, whether or not that would add to acreage that's attributed to you for purposes of the three acres.
That's true. Yeah.
All right, well, the, the engineer we're working with is, is, uh, very familiar with the three acre issue.
Okay, can I ask who this is?
It's Edmund Kesselring.
Okay, okay, fine. Yeah. All right. So you'll want to, anyway, we're doing a townwide project to assist property owners on that. So if you're more than three acres, you might benefit from our project.
Wonderful. Yeah, wonderful. So that's good to know. Thank you for that.
Mary?
Yes. Byron?
Yeah. Um, that also should be looked at because their, of their proximity, um, to the Muzzy Brook. And that would be in our MS four area. And, uh, I don't know if there's any additional ramifications. I know, I, I, uh, I think Bill could, uh, look at, at his map and see if that area does indeed fall into the MS four area. And if it does, there is a, I believe in our stormwater ordinance, a permit required there.
Yeah, I think it would be.
As far as the right of way itself is concerned, um, it's a, it's a useless right of way. Um, at this point, because I don't believe the railroad will ever give you a grade crossing um, to get across onto, onto Sewered Road. That's why I don't think Sewered Road ever got, um, extended. It would, it would be great because then your truck traffic could then, instead of using Coal River Road, the truck traffic could then stay in a, in an industrial area and access Route seven via Sewered Road. But in any case, um, several years ago, um, Coca-Cola came to the town and asked if they could extend their driveway, um, to accommodate their eighteen wheelers. Um, as the, as the eighteen wheelers were, were pulling in, they were tra, they were off the pavement that belonged to Coke and out onto the grass, and they just wanted to, uh, pave that area that the eighteen wheelers were turning around on in order to back up to their loading docks. And the Slight Board at that time gave them permission to do that. I don't think they extended their parking lot more than, uh, twenty feet or something with only a small portion of that being onto the town's right of way. So there is the neighbor there, Coca-Cola, that already does have part of their parking lot extended onto that right of way.
Well, I wa, I was not aware, I was not aware of that precedent. So Byron, this, this right of way serves no useful purpose to the town?
No, it's mostly grassed over for a few, a few spots there. It's mostly all just grassed over.
And so, and, and you can't foresee any possible future use for this?
Not unless the railroad changes its attitude on grade crossings.
Yeah, we won't live to see that. I, I, I think in view of Byron's informa, in, in view of Byron's information, I would move to approve their request because, um, you know, we're talking about jobs and economic development, and I think we should get in front of this and, and go ahead and allow them to do that. It, it's useless to the town and there's no reason to hold these people up, in my view. I would move that we approve it.
Motion's been made to approve? Is there any second?
Well, I'll second it for discussion, but I.
Okay, Don's seconding for discussion. Go ahead, Don.
I, I, I just really believe that we should see some kind of a mitigation plan on that water drainage for that before we actually we can approve it conditionally, but I, I really would like to see that. And I'm sure that you'll address it, but I, I think we should have it for our own protection since it's our land.
That makes perfect sense, and, and that would be something I'd be more than happy to provide. If you want to make this a conditional decision, or if you want me to come back in, in two weeks, I'm happy to do either.
With that condition, I have no problem.
Don, hey, Don, why, Don, why don't we make that part of the motion? Because that's a really good point.
Well, it's your motion, and I was just going to say that, uh, I, you know, that I would vote in favor with the condition uh, that the mitigation plan be, uh, be submitted.
Well, it's.
Right, and that they meet, they meet any and all other permit requirements from the state. I mean, obviously, our given permission doesn't give them permission to do it unless they can do it to the satisfaction of the state.
Well, for legal purposes, and I will make that as an amendment.
Okay, so here's my question. Um, the mitigation, I want to know where it is. Okay, and we don't have that information right now. So my preference would be to table your motion and see what we got in a couple of weeks. I know that's.
Wait a couple of weeks? How, how dire is the situation? Do you, do you need us to have a special meeting for you, or can you wait two weeks?
I don't know if I would describe it as dire, um, but this is work that we were hoping, we, we were going to get done this year, and the window's closing on that.
Okay, season's getting pretty short.
It really is. Yep.
So could you live with two weeks if we got an answer for you?
I can live with two weeks.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So we're going to table this motion, and Bill, please put it on the agenda for two weeks hence. And we'll look for the stormwater mitigation plan and, uh, any information on the MS four waterway, because that will all play into it. So.
Okay.
Thank you for coming in and for your patience, and we'll see you in two weeks.
See you in two weeks.
Okay.
We'll get, we'll get you paved.
That sounds great. Thank you for everything you do. Thanks for having me tonight.
Thank you. Okay. So we're sort of off the agenda, but now we're back on, I think. Any other member of the public who, whom we haven't? All right, let's go. Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Ari.
Hi. Um, I come bearing lots of good news.
Yay.
Lots and lots of good news. Um, it's going to be basically updates, but good updates. So, um, tax update will be my first thing. Uh, we had our first installment this year for this fiscal year, um, due on Friday. Um, and I'm happy to report that we are, um, with on-time payments. We look like, uh, ninety-five point three percent of our first installment has been paid. Um, we have a number of, uh, tax payments that still need to be processed that are, um, not on time. Um, so that will add greatly to our percentage. So, um, it's even better to report that, um, we have already received one point four, um, a million dollars, um, for our next two installments already. So, um, that's really great news. A lot of people came in and reported um, that they wanted to get it over, over with when, you know. And a lot of people also referenced, um, that they used stimulus money. So they had it and they wanted to, to get rid of it to their, to their taxes. So.
Right.
It's.
Do you have any feedback as to why people, why some people missed that first installment and were, and paid late?
Um, various reasons, I think. Sometimes, um, it slips their mind. Um, we did everything, um, in our power to make sure that there were reminders to the public. Um, like I've reported out before, we put it in the newspaper and on social media um, this year, and I do have to say thank you, and I did say thank you to the school for putting a reminder on their great digital sign at the school. Um, they were happy to do it and, uh, it, it looked great.
And of course, you've got one out.
We have one out front. Mm-hmm. Um, and, uh, so I really don't know. I think it just slipped people's minds. Um, oh, we also stayed open that day. Um, longer than we normally do, um, for that reason. Um, we usually close at two on Fridays, and we stayed open till four thirty. And, uh, people utilized that a lot and appreciated that. So.
The, the tax escrow, you know, the, the mortgage holders, sometimes will escrow taxes or require that taxes be, were there any of them late? Because that had been an issue in the past.
Oh, those, no, no. Um, in, I did notice that something, a, a larger company, but not one of the escrow companies, a mortgage company that had several payments for that, um, did come in late, uh, this year. So we'll have to follow up on that. But the escrow amounts, um, that come from our large companies like Wells Fargo and Heritage Family, those were here and processed very early. So, um, that went really well.
Okay.
So that's our first good news. Um, second good news is, um, our one percent did come to us, I believe I, I mentioned that last time in August. And, um, this year we've budgeted, um, one point one, I believe.
Yeah.
That we were anticipating. Um, so if you kind of think about dividing that up over four payments, four times we get the payment. If you look at it, if, for even numbers, think about on average, maybe two hundred and seventy-five thousand, um, to get to that amount. Well, um, we are, I'm happy to report that, uh, this first installment came out to be three hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and three dollars.
Wow.
Yeah, so that is, um, we're well on our way to, to good, good news there.
Yep.
Uh, third, another piece of great news. As you know, the ARPA funds, um, have been designated. Their first installment, um, came to us in all towns. Um, and we will get the second installment of the two pieces um, in a year, I believe, is what I, I read. And right now, with the two payments for that fir, first installment, um, we are, uh, we have been given six hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars and some change. So.
Okay. That was, that includes the, what was to be the county money, but it got passed through the towns instead.
Yeah, so, uh.
That's about right. Yeah.
Were you, did, um, Bill give you the chart that?
I've seen the chart.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so in the end, when this is all over, it looks like, um, the town will get one point two million roughly. Um, so it's my job to, um, make sure that that money is protected and doing the best for the town until you,
Right.
you guys allocate it. So, um, I plan on sitting with my, um, bank representative. Um, we really need to, currently, this money is sitting in our fund at our bank, um, our general fund. But I do not want it to sit there. Um, I think it needs its own separate place so that, um, we can keep, you know, the accounting piece on our end, yes, but also the accounting on the banks and too, and, and.
Got to track the interest as well.
Exactly. So, um, that's on my to-do list with our bank representative and.
Have you also checked in with our auditor?
I have. We have several conversations. In my mind, I kind of feel like together the three of us should have a little meeting. If not, you know, include all of you guys, but I really need, you know, them to, to discuss this with me so that I keep this.
Good, thank you.
Perfect for us. Um, that was my three great news. Um, and number four is just honestly, um, a reminder. I don't know if it's my job to remind anybody, but I got a notification for, um, the circle deadline.
Yes, thank you.
Um, and that is going to be any articles that need to be submitted, need to be submitted by October first. And I plan on putting something in there. So I just wanted to give everybody else a reminder.
Thank you. It's all department heads. Um, please try and get your circle article. I've got to do one too.
Mm-hmm.
And so they'll, you'll get another reminder in two weeks, but this will give you a little time to get it written.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. So those were the four things that I had. Thought those were very important for us to.
Well, I think that's just splendid, Carrie.
Me too. I like to be the bearer of good news.
Any questions or comments for Carrie Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer? If not, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
For coming in. Okay, um, Mike Rowe, Town Rec, Recreation Director. Good evening.
Good evening to you. A couple of things. One, we're transitioning over to winter, so we will be taking care of our fields so that when spring starts, we don't have to spend time. So that'll happen in the next couple of weeks. We rotate till them and edge them and get them ready for, uh, our spring season, which is coming quickly, which means we'll be shutting off water in the next, I don't know. Then the next month, that'll be shut down in our parks, uh, so that our pipes don't freeze and burst. Um, the only other thing, there are two things. One, there were, uh, some horses spotted in Northwood Park, uh, people riding them. Um, I found out who it was and I reminded them that that's not allowed in the park. It's posted right on the front part of the sign. As you go in, it's, it says no ATVs, horses, golf. So that's listed on the park, which has been there since, I guess, day one. Um, so I think we're okay with that. Um, as far as horses traveling through the park, I don't, I don't think it's a necessity that we allow horses in the park with all the dogs and, you know, you come around a corner on a trail and there's a horse. I just can fathom the what could happen. So we're okay with that. Everyone's on the same page for that.
I think the question is whether we had an ordinance on it or a select board action. And I think Bill took a look and the, the advice is to probably renew with a motion from the select board that horses, ATVs, and whatever else are not allowed.
And golf was the other one. That's on the sign currently.
Horses and what else?
Horses and ATVs, snowmobiles, uh, whatever you motorized vehicles are not allowed through the park or the trail system. I would, I would add the, the trail system now that it, it exists.
Yeah, I make a motion that no horses, uh, motorized vehicles other than cars coming into the facility. Um, ATVs, um, skadoos are not allowed in Northwood Park.
On the trail sys, and on the trail system.
And on the trail systems.
Or motocross bikes.
Right. Exactly, Don.
Because they have a tendency to use those sand pits.
Okay. Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. None of public's motion carries. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Well, somebody brought it to mind, and, um, we just wanted to make sure that before it starts to become maybe a habit that we, it's not. So thank you for that.
When you talk to the people involved, were they?
They were fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Yes, I, I, yes.
Okay. Okay.
It should be.
So you might want to do that one. Yeah. Okay.
Um, the only other thing I have is the Halloween party.
Oh, yeah.
And how you would like me to proceed, whether you.
This is under new business item D. We knew, it was brought up last meeting. We wanted a little time to discuss it. What are our options for the Halloween party format? And this is JP, we want to hear you weigh in on this too.
Um, in the past, it's been in the schools, gymnasium. We have events, the kids go around, they, and then they get candy. We serve some food. Nothing major pizza and, and some sodas and if parents bring in treats, you know, prepackaged treats, is what we've done in the past. So the question is, um, do you want to continue that, what are your thoughts? I know everything's really up in the air. And I just would like your guidance as to maybe I hold off. I- it's up to you, um, but if I, if I am doing something. Then I need to kind of really kickstart it, cause it's really not that far away. And there's a lot to be done on my end. So I just need guidance from you, I mean, if you want to suspend it for another year, I'm okay with that, if there's an option that people are thinking about, I'm okay with that too. I, I mean, that's a possibility, there's a possibility of, you know, we could have pre-made bags and they could just swing by and. You know, the kids could get them as they would drive to a neighborhood to get them, so that's a possibility, I'm just looking more for. What you think is the safest way, obviously JP, I would love. For your, um, input, it's typically well attended, uh, it is well attended.
Yeah, it is.
Um, because it's a center point for the kids to come in town. So just looking for some guidance.
Yep, go ahead JP.
I'm always, I'm always gonna take our conservative route. And, uh, you know, I think Rutland Town's got more cases now than they ha, have ever had during this pandemic, so. I would discourage any large gatherings of children, if you can do something like hand out remotely and. You know, keep them apart, I'd be all for that, but as far as collecting in one big space, I think we're asking for trouble.
I agree with JP, cause we've, what, five, I saw in the paper today, there's been five children at Rutland Town School. And I have, I have a grandchild who's home because he was exposed in his classroom, so. As much as I like the Halloween party, um, I was one of the forerunners at starting that, but. I don't want to see anybody sick because we had a gathering that was more than. More than, than enough with what's going on, that just scares me.
Sharon, did, were those kids tested and have COVID, or did, did these just five kids that got a cold?
It was in the paper, there were five children with COVID. And it's not with a cold, I, you and I differ, Don, but you know what? I don't want to see anybody dead because of this, or any child deathly sick. I just don't.
I don't either.
So.
But I, I don't like to deal with point one or point two or one percent possibilities and make rules for ninety-nine percent based on one percent. I just don't like doing that, I don't think that's fair and I don't think it's democratic. And I don't think it's very healthy either, because, well. I don't want to get into a long, long discussion, but kids for generations and generations have been getting colds or flu or whatever. And recovering and having natural antibodies because of that, which makes them stronger. And that's just a fact.
So unknown and so, um, we just don't, we've never experienced anything like this.
That's correct.
Dare to dance with the devil, so to speak, or should we caution on the, on the, to be a little bit more prudent, so.
So what, what, Mike, would be our alternative, the, the goody bag drive-through?
The, and that's fine, if that's.
JP?
I mean, it's certainly better than collecting together.
I'm fi, I'm fine with whatever you want, I, I'm not, I don't fall on either side, I just want to know what you would. It, what, what your preference is, and I will go forward with that. So I, I'm not making the decision, I, I just, you know.
I, I agree with the, uh, with the goody bag handoff, I mean, I think that'll work.
So, can I treat that as a motion, Ben?
Pardon me?
Can I treat that as a motion? Is there a second?
Seriously, uh, there is no reason to have them all gathered in, in a group.
And, and that's why, so I, I can pull off something like that where they can just swing by the school and, and I can have a couple of our eighth grade, just, you know.
We'll call it drive-by trick or treat.
Well, if that's, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? This is, uh, drive-by Halloween goody bags. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries, so thank you for organizing it.
Well, we'll, we'll pull something off.
Okay.
Bill will be happy, cause it'll be a little extra candy for Bill, so.
Yeah.
And Carrie and Susan, cause that, that's all they, that's, that's how they keep the people in the office.
Do we have any, uh, select board questions or comments for Mike Rowe, our town rec director?
Uh, soccer starts this weekend, so if you want some fresh air, you can head over either to, uh, I'm sure you can find a game over at the new community rec center. For the city or at Georgetty or Meadow, uh. You know, Meadow Street, yeah, so our kids are, are kicking into action this weekend, so if it's nice, get out and support them. And football also starts this weekend, so flag football, that's on Sundays and that is at the rec center too, so if you're looking for something to do. Go support our youth then, as, as they're participating in their sports.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, Mikey.
Ed Dumas, town police chief.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So, just kind of, I think we have like thirty-four calls for service for the last two week period. Nothing out of the ordinary at this point in time. Things at the Greenmount Plaza scene have slowed down somewhat and. Don't have, we did have that one matter I spoke to Mary on, but I don't think I want to do it in executive session.
We do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we dealing with that in executive?
Yes, we are. That's enough, that's about two minutes.
Yeah.
We, we set it for seven o'clock.
Right.
Yeah.
That's about all I have at this point, unless you folks have some questions for me.
Okay, um, any questions for our town police chief? If not, thanks, but don't go too far.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Chris Clark, town fire chief is, I think on the, is he on the line?
I am.
What have you got for us?
Uh, not much tonight, it's been pretty slow, we've had three fire calls in the last two weeks, um. We did have a car fire last night up at the mall. Uh, it wasn't close to the building or anything, but, um, the people were telling us that they were. Homeless and living in their cars, so they still have a. Little bit of problem with people going in the parking lot at night, not, not so much during the day, I don't think, but at night, um. So they lost everything they own inside their car last night. And the only other thing is, we did our pump testing last week and all the trucks are good to go for another year. And they all passed, so. That's all I got.
Good, thank you, um, Bill, will you make sure that, um, Joe Alexander and Ed Carr and. Uh, Michael Sternberg are aware of the car fire?
Uh, I actually talked to Michael, I talked to Michael today about it, he is aware.
Okay, okay, good, thank you. All right, um, I think it is just seven o'clock now. So I'm going to, um, entertain a motion to go into executive session. For potential pending litigation, and I'd like the chief to stay, if you will.
So move.
Motion's made?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded? Um, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, we're in executive session, I, we are out of execu, thank you, we're out of executive session at seven. Oh, seven, is there a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we allow the public video record made. Um, be released to attorney Susan Edwards.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, motion's made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 The video, the public records request video, okay, that attorney Edwards made, and I think there's only one of those, okay. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Now Byron, thank you, um, town road commissioner Byron Hathaway.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Would first like to tell you that our new truck has arrived, it's up at the, uh, uh, town garage. And, uh, will be taken to Burlington later this week, um, and left with the upfitter for, for the body and the plow. Um, I think your, uh. The invoice for that truck is in your, was in the highway packet. And I did not put a code number on it, cause I don't know what the code number is for the depreciation account.
It is noted, it is, um, as a separate, coming out of the depreciation account, I did see it in our packet, so. I think you have three signatures on it. Thank you.
Great. Within the next couple of weeks, um, how you want to handle disposal of the, uh, the other truck, our new truck should be back. I would assume sometime, uh, around the first of November. So we, there is some time to think about that, whether you want to, uh, you know, put it out to auction, put it up to bid, just advertise it. Put a flat rate number on it and hope somebody takes it or however, um, I don't think you need to make a decision on that tonight, but just, you know. Bear, bear in mind some of those options and, uh, we'll bring it up for discussion at the next meeting.
Okay, and you'll have some recommendations for us?
Sure.
Okay.
Uh, I sent a email to you, um, I have a, a written copy here, um, it's for the, uh, grants and aid. Uh, grant agreement, which is about twelve thousand dollars, which is next year's money. VTRN's is getting around to getting some of this paperwork done in a, in a more timely manner. I would like to have the board authorize Mary to, to sign that grant agreement, and I can leave the grant agreement at the, uh. At the town office for Mary to sign, unless she has a paper copy already.
Uh, it looks like I have a paper copy of it here, um, this is, as Byron indicated, the amount awarded is. Twelve thousand, one hundred dollars, the town share is three thousand, twenty-five dollars. This is, um, grants and aid, is there any motion to be made?
So move.
Questions made and seconded, and I'll include in that the authorization for me to sign on behalf of the board. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries and I'm signing.
Okay, I can pick that up again tomorrow and, uh, email that to the, uh, appropriate person back in my area. And that will put that into motion for next year.
Thank you, Byron.
The sidewalk grant that we were awarded, uh, for the post-road sidewalk. Um, that we're all up to date on our paperwork at this point. Um, all I'm waiting for at this time is for VTRN's to assign. Some project, uh, manager from their end to meet with us. And discuss how we're gonna go about doing this, I guess. Um, this is a little different process that I've ever been through, so, uh, as, as I find out more. Uh, I will certainly keep you, uh, informed in, in, in where we need to go with that. Um, and then the last thing I have, we are fully permitted now. Uh, with that two fifty stormwater, blah, 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 for the shared use path at, uh. Northwood Park. Um, my question is, do we want to try and proceed with the construction this fall? Or do we want to wait for spring when it's probably gonna be a little easier to stabilize and get the, uh. Uh, and get grass growing to, uh, stabilize that sand up there.
Um, so before you do, there is a place where the town. Um, needs to sign indicating, this is for the, um, stormwater discharge permit which came through. Um, and that does require a signature.
And record.
And then it gets recorded in the town office, so, um, if I can have a motion to allow me to sign on behalf of the town.
So move.
Motion's made and seconded for me to sign on behalf of the town for the stormwater discharge permit. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries? Okay, um, then the question posed by Byron is. Do we ask him to start this fall or is this, um, this is on the shared use path construction or do we wait until spring?
Or do we want to formally bid it out and see what that might cost? Somewhere here.
Pleasure, folks, do we have any recommendation either from recreation or from highway, cause I know those two committees have been working on this.
Let me throw some numbers at you if you'd like. As of June thirtieth, um, pre-audit, the, uh, highway had carryover of six hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, eighty-three dollars of that has already been used. Uh, leaving three hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars. I was hoping to use two hundred and fifty thousand of that. As, as our contribution to the town line road culvert, which needs to go out to bid here pretty soon. Which would leave you then seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars to build the shared use path.
So were you saying by it would be better to wait to spring?
That's what I heard.
If, if you want me to, if you want the highway department to build it, yes. I think it would be better because of other projects and things that I've got knowing coming up here in, in October. If, if you don't start actual construction till the first of October, you're looking at a three-week project, you're into the end of October. Just how much, just how much grass can you get started to help stabilize? Um, the sand up there and, and, and not wanting to get into, um, having some erosion problems and, and things of that nature. I think it's better to wait until next spring.
Did we, yeah, I, I think we were anticipating that the highway department would build it, that, that's my recollection anyway. It appears that we have the funds for it, did we budget that or is this, I mean, this is carryover money anyway, in large part.
There was fifty thousand dollars originally budgeted for that, that's been carried over. In one or two budget years just because of permitting problems, um, but anyway, so, yeah. A- as I, as I had predicted in my own mind, any amount of carryover that's been built up in the highway fund is probably gonna. Pretty much disappear next year.
Okay. Um, so it sounds to me like this is, um, something that can wait until next spring. And it can come out of the carryover money that we have in the highway department, which is. Carryover from authorized amounts to be spent on this project for a year or two ago, is that?
That's correct.
We are, okay, Bill, if that could, I don't know, is we need a motion for that? No, we can just reflect that in a minute, so.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Byron.
Okay, thank you, that's all I had for you this evening.
Uh, well, let's see, there is a certificate of substantial completion, which has been presented by. Contractor Masterson and Son Excavating Engineer, Otter Valley, Otter Creek Engineering, Inc. This is for the Randbury Road Water Main Extension. Um, and there are, did you get this Byron, I think there are three places where the. Town's authorized representative needs to sign and say, we're good, right?
Uh, I haven't seen that, the only thing I know, um, involved with that project, I think there was twenty-five hundred dollars that was. Kept in the retainage by the town to address a small drainage issue, um, that's come up. Uh, since the project was completed.
Okay, so this, um. I guess I'd rather that you take a look at it before we sign off on it.
I don't understand the overages and the underages.
Well, that's probably a good reason to have, uh, Byron take. Well, that's probably a good reason to have Byron take a look at it. So I think, why don't you, I'm going to leave it in here unsigned and ask Bill to share it with you so that you'll know what they're requesting.
Okay, I'll stop in later in the morning and take a look at that.
Okay, thank you Byron.
Yeah, thank you.
On balance, it looks like it's in our favor, but I didn't, I just didn't understand.
A little bit of pooling, and that's why there's a retainage of $2,500 for the town. But we want to make sure that's reflected in there because Byron's going to have to deal with it. Okay, any questions of the select board for Town Road Commissioner Byron Hathaway? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Next question, next presenter, Barbara Noyes-Poling, Town Planning Commission.
Good evening.
Hi Barbara.
Hi. The, the Town Planning Commission hasn't met since your last meeting. But we are meeting Thursday night and one of the items on that agenda is a conversation with the Thomas family about potential plans, potential development on the western side of Route 7 where their property is. So I'll have more to report on that at your next meeting, I believe. I also wanted to report out a couple, on a couple of projects that I'm administering for the town as, as an employee of the Regional Planning Commission. The first one is a stormwater project at Windmere. So Andres is still working on the design there. There are some complications. I think I've alluded to those before. But the, the deer yard, which is contiguous to where he would like to expand the pond, the stormwater pond there, is going to be an Act 250 issue. And so he has to decide whether to go that route. Kim Luchko of the Environmental Commission is suggesting, why don't you use just some of the land that hasn't been developed at Windmere? The developers do have plans to put more homes in there. So I'm, there, there is a little bit of resistance to that. So I don't know how Andres is going to, where he's going to go with, with these issues. But he's got another month or two to figure it out for this particular grant. And again, this is just for the design.
Okay.
Yeah, so, you know, and of course, that's the Moon Brook and the MS4. And the other thing from the Regional Planning Commission, I'm overseeing the, the pocket park process of designing that park. So Friday, we have a meeting with the stakeholders with historical interests there. And that's going to be very well attended. The Vermont Historical, Division of Historical Preservation will be there, GMP will be there, the Rutland Historical Society, the Crown Point Road people will be there, DAR, Vermont Marble Museum, representing the Vermont Marble Company, and a couple of Native American groups. One of those groups was suggested to me by the consultant working on GMP's relicensing. And it's a group, it's, to me, it's a relatively new group. It's the Stockbridge Muncie Band of Mohican Indians. And they are going to be a little bit concerned about land disturbance there, even for parking lots. So Byron, I might be calling you soon to get some information on how much, you know, how much land is actually excavated for parking lots or, or moved or anything, or those sorts of things. So we'll have that meeting Thursday. We're going to pick the historical periods of interest, and there's quite a few of them. And then the historical points of interest, and there's quite a few of those in that area. And then talk about what kind of technology we'd like to use to highlight those. You know, is it going to be low tech, like signs or kiosks or something more high tech? QR codes or even, you know, websites that have virtual walking tours? Or maybe even a walking tour itself? So lots of business to go through there. You know, some people, you know, some people have commented to me, why don't you just put a couple benches up there and, and call it good? I've been working with a couple of local historians too. One of them is Elaine Purdy. And she had a recent comment there. She said that so much history is being discarded around the Rutland area. It makes this project, the one at the falls in Center Rutland, that much more important. So that's pretty much a direct quote and kind of inspirational to me. So those are my highlights.
Hey. Thank you. I, I think I'm in on that call on Friday. I think that's on my calendar, so.
Right, 1 o'clock, yeah.
Okay.
Aren't we, Barbara, aren't, aren't we actually doing more to bring attention to and to highlight and to preserve the whole concept of what that falls represents and the area by doing this, excuse me, by doing this project? Because basically that land has sat there since I was a kid as pretty much a, an unfettered jungle between the, between the falls and Route 4. And, and now we're doing something that's going to embellish the history, let's say.
Yeah, there's just, the history is just so rich there. I mean, from, I mean, it was the original settlement for Rutland. And it might have been Rutland City if me didn't want to hang on to it and, and keep his mills and all those businesses active and making money for him. So yeah, it goes back, I mean, and then Native Americans were there thousands of years using it as, you know, for fishing, of course, and as a campground. It was pivotal, it's always been a crossroads. So it was pivotal for the Revolutionary War and, and getting supplies and, and men over to Lake Champlain to protect the forts. It was pivotal for the railroad industry in Rutland. And then that led to Marble, Vermont Marble Company. So, and now it's a big hydro center. So it's the, it might be a problem of, of, you know, limiting what's there and, and the messages that we can get across of the history. And it was also, there were also cultural connections. It, you know, landscape artists loved the area. So, you know, the Hudson School of Art, so.
Well, I would make a suggestion, and you, you may or may not have dealt with this in terms of your development of the project. But with regards to the concerns that Native Americans may have, I would suggest that whatever we do over there, that there be no paving done. And that if we do any, let's say, improvement of the access or the ability to park or have benches or whatever, that it be a, a gravelled or a sure packed area or, or cover, as opposed to doing any kind of excavation, which would be required if you were going to do paving. Then you'd have to dig into the dirt there.
Yeah, yeah. Good ideas. And this particular group is also concerned about a boat launch and what kind of disturbance would be there for that kind of a facility down by the river. So we'll, we'll start hashing these out on Friday. And pull everybody's concerns and ideas together. But thank you for those.
Yeah, I don't think we're talking about big boats though, are we? We're talking mainly canoes and kayaks.
And kayaks.
Right.
A very limited stairway going down to the, to the riverbank and, and a very, very limited type access. It doesn't have to be any docking or anything like that. Not for kayaks and canoes.
Yeah.
Pretty much all you have to have is an anchor point, really. That's, that's it.
Yeah, we watched the Boy Scouts put in last summer with their kayaks. And they didn't, they just hauled them down there. There was, they didn't need anything.
No.
No. Okay, any questions for Barbara?
No, keep up the good work.
Thank you Barbara. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks Barb.
Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant.
Evening.
Good evening.
Gone pretty, pretty far through everything, so we're in good shape.
Got in there.
I think you've covered everything that was on the desk, so shouldn't be anything else left there. I think all the originals in the envelope were taken care of, so it should be good shape. There was a meeting room request, which was included in the packet, New Business B, from the GOP Caucus.
Oh yes.
Howard's going to be here to open, he'll be the representative to open and take care of the building for them, so.
Okay. Select Board authorized the Democrats to use the meeting room, so I'll entertain a motion to have the Republicans use it.
Show move.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
You had on your desk a welcome letter. There's a business moving into town. They're currently located in the city. They're relocating to Rutland Town. They're going to be taking the spot next to Valvoline. It was going to be K-9 Wanderlust, and then they never materialized in the building. So there, this is a BMF Auto Detailing, they're going to take over that building and work out of there. So there's a letter there for them.
Okay.
Also in the packet, E was some information that I found from Vtrans on changing speed limits. We haven't heard from the city yet on, on that topic of changing the speed limits coming into town. But I did look up and they have a whole page and thing on, on what their process is for changing speed limits. So it's just some information pulled from their site on that. And Mary, you had asked, so letter F is the current list of proposed ARPA funded projects.
Yeah, so I had gone through and our listening meetings and individual comments people had made to me. And I think comments that we heard at select board meetings. And I've come up with a list of 24 different ideas for use of ARPA funds. Remembering we have some time to do this. I thought I would put it on the agenda and we could start maybe indicating which ones are of interest to select board members and possibly pursuing a little research to see, eh, whether it's covered by ARPA, the, the guidelines for use of ARPA funds and whether there's interest and usefulness to the town. So. Now.
So I think that this presents, the ARPA funds presents an opportunity to the town. I don't know if most folks are aware, but we were able to build the center street, the Center Rutland Fire Station. And we came in under cost and we have been using the surplus monies to pay off the bond. Well, that bond, that money is exhausted relatively soon, which means the town is going to start to incur the bond payment for the Center Rutland Fire Station. It's a substantial payment every month. And another thing that's going on that's really going to hurt Rutland Town if the current financing scheme for education passes the legislature and all indications are that will, Rutland Town will be one of five towns who's going to see a pretty steep, and I don't want to sound alarmist and say astronomical, but the steepest increases in school tax because we are categorized as a gold town with very little poverty or other, or the other socio economical issues that the study took into effect to how to more equitably finance education. So we're in for a significant tax increase in Rutland Town in the next year or so. With that in mind, I would like to propose we hold off any discussion on how to use these ARPA funds until we've consulted with our attorney to see how we can structure the expenditure of those funds to pay for the new fire station or as much as we can of the new fire station. Now, I've done a little bit of research and I understand that generally, infrastructure is not a qualifying target for these funds. However, certain infrastructure such as shelters or emergency services or anything having to do with health and welfare would be covered. And I would like to know how much, if any, of this fire department we can fund because with this amount of money, we could almost pay cash for this building and save our taxpayers 20 years of bond payments on top of what we know is going to be a substantial educational tax increase.
I agree.
I have one, I don't disagree, but I don't also want to sit on this too long. But I have one that I think we can move forward on. And that is, oh, it's about a third of the way down on the front page, and that's replacing lost town revenue. Now, this is purely a calculation. There's a formula that the federal government has provided. And over the pre-COVID years, if our revenue, we're allowed to use a formula which projects a 3% increase. And if we didn't hit that during the COVID time, then we can use some of the ARPA money to put into our general fund. And not, and that's just, as my understanding is free money to us. And, and the strings then are released for us to, to use it as we will.
Well, that could be that, that we could use that money for the planning and development on the site for the new station.
Well, that's, and I'm saying, I think we should explore that because it's a formula. I won't say it's a simple formula, and I'm looking at Carrie and she's not meeting my eye. And I can understand that because I was going to ask Susan and Carrie to do the calculations to see whether we can get any, use any of the ARPA money for replacing lost town revenues and then how much? And then we can, you know, that then becomes general revenue to the town and wouldn't stop anything else from going on. So.
Maybe one of those rare occasions JP, but I'm 110% in agreement with you.
I wish you would have warned me to sit down before you say that.
You're sitting down.
I want you to record that in the, in the deepest portion of your brain where it will stay forever. So here in the Department of Treasury's guidelines for expenditure, proper expenditure of these funds, there's a number five, and this is in the document 2 CFR 200.320. And this is, you've got 33 pages of this stuff, and I've, I've tried to go, go through it as religiously as I can. But number five says, "Equipment and real property management. Any purchase of equipment or real property with SRF RF funds must be consistent with the Uniform Guidance at 2 CFR Part 200 Subpart D. Equipment and real property acquired under this program must be used for the originally authorized purpose." Well, without reading any more of this paragraph, which only goes a couple more sentences, that number five obviously specifically authorizes the purchase of equipment or real property, as long as it complies. And then if we, or Kevin Brown goes in to 200 Subpart D, then that will, that will further define what it is. But I think. I think you, you're, you're on the right track, JP, and, uh, and I really sincerely believe, we, we've got a lot of good little projects on this list, and, and I, I, I think a lot of them are they're really good ideas. But I don't see any of them that are really a lot of money. But this is a lot of money. I mean, a million two, and, and my view is the same as yours. Uh, my view is that the money should be in the greatest majority spent to either save or invest in capital projects that would normally otherwise have been costing the taxpayers money. In other words, they will be spent to save taxpayers' money rather than, for instance, being put into programs that are gonna be, require more personnel, or more administration, and therefore, more, um, infrastructure costs to the town. So, um, I agree with you that, and, and we have how long? We have, uh?
December of 2024.
Uh, 24.
To figure out where to spend it, and then it has to be expended by 26. Yeah.
Yeah, so, we've got plenty of time.
And, and, well, there's also one hundred. Don, I, I think you made an excellent point. I didn't, I didn't mean by this to belittle any of the other suggestions. It's just that we've always prided ourselves in this town of being really conscious of the tax burden to our taxpayers, and I'm, I'm telling you, if you saw this formula that, I guess it came out of UVM. Um, Vermont Town Taxes, School Taxes go up considerably, and places like Rutland City, they go down because of the different factors that they considered, so I think it's real important we not add any further debt to the townspeople and what's already coming.
So I would make one more observation. I don't have a problem of, you know, waiting on any of these ARPA ideas. We may also wanna see what the federal government comes up with for the infrastructure bill that is working its way through Congress, because that may very well have funding for, um, public safety buildings. So, two, two good reasons for holding on for a bit.
Great, thank you.
I hate to dampen your.
But I will, I will say, with your permission, I still wanna do the calculation on replacing lost town revenue.
Oh, yeah, no, that's a great idea.
Okay. So that's a yes, Carrie. Yes, yeah, okay.
And we may, yeah. We may have a substantial interest payment. It's fine.
You mean, payment into us? Yeah, yeah. Well, that's another question is, are, are the strings also on the interest?
No strings at all.
Okay.
Interest money on ARPA funds is not subject to any of these guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
Nor, nor restrictions.
Okay, well, we're trying to pull together as much information as we can, without any one person saying this is the way it is. But I will note that the League of Cities and Towns, as part of their town, um, their annual town fair is doing an ARPA section. It's, um, three workshops on October 4th. So if you haven't signed up, that would be a good one to sign up for. I, I was thinking of attending those two. And the town will pay your tuition, and we get a discount of one anyways for whoever is interested in doing that.
I, I have signed up for the virtual options.
Right.
It allows you to do all of them, so I, I've already registered for, for that. There's a couple, I'm not gonna do all of them, but there's a couple that I did wanna do, so.
Yeah.
Yep. It's, it's easy to do if anybody wants to do it.
Yep. So, yeah, I'd like to be registered for the, the ARPA track.
Do you want me to do that for you?
It's all virtual, yeah.
You want me to sign up for it?
Yes, please.
Mary?
Yes.
Number three, uh, of, uh, 42 CFR 43351, Cash Management.
Yep.
As such, recipients can place funds in interest-bearing accounts, do not need to remit interest to Treasury, and are not limited to using that interest for eligible uses under the SLFRF award.
Good, okay. All right. But we're still not going to, and we still wanna make sure with Town Attorney and, you know, and our auditor on all of this stuff, okay? So, but for the time being, um, we have a nice list. We'll keep adding things to the list. I just added, J, the, um, the comments here, and we'll proceed along. All right? What else do we have, Bill?
Uh, I did receive, uh, the draft license application for GMP for the dam for Center Rutland.
Okay.
Uh, so if anybody wants to review the documents, I can get those for you. Uh, we did receive our official acknowledgement from the Vermont Department of Health uh, for JP's appointment to Health Officer, so we, he's been officially accepted as the Health Officer.
Okay.
And, uh, Stephanie, uh, from the Regional Planning Commission reached out. Uh, she said that, you know, we are, are, uh, reimbursement rate for federal disasters, uh, is, we're, we're one of the better ones. Uh, we get 75% uh, reimbursement from FEMA. Uh, and we're at 12 and a half for the state level. Uh, we could go to 17 and a half. We talked about in the past, there's some flood mitigation stuff we'd have to do to do that.
Right.
Uh, but we're, we're above the minimum, but not at the maximum, but we're, we're in good shape.
Good.
And that is everything I have.
Okay, just looking through. Just a notice from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns that they have changed life insurance carriers. Do we have that as part of our benefits package for employees?
We, we don't use them. We use blue, I think that, that was health insurance, so.
Well, it says Lincoln Financial to Madison National Life Insurance Company changed life insurance carriers, so. I don't know if that applies, but that's just a notice. Um, we've dealt with the, well, we're gonna wait on the Cedar Parking Lot Paving Town Road thing. Um, we have trying to think of anything else. What are committee assignments? Um, just a reminder to everybody, before too long, we're gonna be starting in budgeting for the coming year, and we'll, you know, hopefully have a budget put together early December. That's, that's an ambitious goal, but I would like to try and do that. Um, so it would be good to get with your committees and department heads to start mapping out what um, plans there are for budgets for the coming year. And take a look at your uh, list of committees and figure out where, like, I, I know that Sharon and I should be meeting with Fire and Police. We haven't done that for a while. So those are a couple of meetings we should schedule in the near future.
And the survey is, is complete. We have copies of it for the parcel on McKinley Avenue.
Good, yes.
Uh, so that was, that was the pause in the meetings for that building, uh, but we do have, I do have the physical copies of them. Uh, and one has been, uh, we didn't get a Mylar, so that's been, that's been recorded.
Okay, good. Okay, so, um, we should probably set a meeting for the McKinley Avenue Public Safety Building. Okay? Any other issues that we know of? Just trying to go through my list. Um, we will need an executive session on a personnel matter. Uh, we've done the, looking under. We haven't forgotten JP Fagin, so we'll hold on that for a minute. Projects list, well, we sort of touched on some of them. Not too many, but, yeah, we did, okay. Um, we have done A, we're, the Randbury Road Water Project, we're holding on that so Byron can take a look at the um, Certificate of Substantial Completion. We have approved B, the Meeting Room Request. We have done the, or put on hold the Cedar Paving Matter. We have discussed the Halloween Party Format. We have discussed Horses in Northwood Park. Under Old Business, uh, Succession Planning, we haven't really touched on yet, and we need to start. And that might be part of the budget discussion for Departments. And the Storage of Departmental Records, we did some of that last meeting. Diamond Run Mall, we did meet with any old business or any new business, Select Board Members, before we go into Executive Session.
Uh, we, the Executive Session on the letter issue?
Yes.
Will Bill be invited to the Executive Session?
He certainly can be.
I, 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 I would wish that he would be.
Okay. Are you recusing yourself from that Executive Session?
No. No, no. Um, no, because I have.
Well, let's hold on the Executive Session until I'm sure that we don't have anything else in the public session from Select Board Members.
Hey, right.
Okay.
And the other new business, uh, I, I have, uh, I have a list of questions that I'd like to submit to the Board under New Business. Uh, you could consider it as part of a desk packet, but, you know, I don't, I don't know how this desk packet thing works. I guess it's stuff that, stuff that you get.
After I mail it out.
After it's mailed out.
Yeah.
So, uh, this is, this is what I have, and I'm going to.
Yes. Thank you. Has JP seen this? Because it does regard the position of Town Health Officer.
Pardon me?
Has JP seen this?
It's on his desk.
Right, has JP seen it prior to right now?
No, no, nobody has seen it.
Okay.
Prior to now.
Okay.
But. Um, and uh, I'm submitting it to put this on the public record, and I'm leaving it to you, Madam Chair, to make your decision as to how you would handle it, because there's enough here that obviously we're not going to handle this this evening.
Well, this concerns, it's a series of questions concerning the position of Town Health Officer.
The position.
And I think the current Town Health Officer should at least be able to see this before we get into any discussion of it.
Well, I would agree.
Okay, all right.
I'm just submitting this for the record right now.
Okay, so let's put this on the agenda for two weeks?
Sure.
Okay, and, um, JP, there's a copy here. Um, did you get a copy, Bill?
No.
Okay, so, do you have an extra, Don?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so let's get that to Bill. Bill, if you could scan it and send it to JP, and then everybody's in the loop on this one. Okay, any other items of new or old business? Before we go into Executive Session?
Did we have five minutes before we do that?
Um, yeah, why don't, why don't we entertain, sorry, did anybody? Jim Schultz, do you have anything?
Um, I was wondering to say something first.
No, uh.
Okay, so, um, had a conversation with Don um, about use of the ARPA funds, and one of the, um, possibilities would be for those folks who are delinquent on their taxes due to issues relative to COVID-19 and that nature.
That is clearly, I think, within the use of ARPA funds, yeah.
So, at, um, Don's request, I'm putting together a list of the folks that I know possibly could benefit from this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I was, um, thinking of the possibility of also, um, sending out some letters to the folks who I don't know anything about why they haven't. Uh, to let them know that the, what the, what their issue is may involve something that could be, um, construed as part of, um, where the ARPA funds could go.
That actually is already on the list, okay?
Okay.
So it says, "Replace abated tax revenue, so that if they came into the town and requested an abatement, and they posed COVID-related issues, and the town abated their taxes, I believe the town could then take ARPA funds to replace the taxes that were abated." Is that kind of what you were thinking?
That was part of what the, this, with the conversation with Don, part of why I'm, I'm, um, putting this forward now is how do we wanna approach this and what would be the best method to, to make it work as far as, um, that? And to get approval from the Board for me to send out those letters to folks. Um, you know, it, just a verbal approval, doesn't have to be a motion, I wouldn't think, but just for me to do that.
Would you ordinarily be sending them a notice about this time anyway?
Um, yeah, I try to send out notices on a somewhat regular basis.
Okay.
Just to, uh, to confirm that the Board is, that the Board is on board with me doing that and referencing the ARPA funds and things of that nature, so that they, they know that they're approaching the Board of Civil Authority.
Right.
Would do that. Now, would, and I guess at this point, with that, you, you mentioning that, is that the only way that you want to be able to use the ARPA funds is by replacing, requiring the people to come to the Board of Civil Authority to get it abated?
No, you see, my intention was.
Well, well, let me answer that part, the, because if you have another idea, great, but for this part.
I did.
This part, let me finish. It'll only take a sec. Clearly, if they go through the abatement process, they're going to have to show that it's a COVID-related matter.
Yeah.
And then it's clear to us that this is replacing lost revenue to the town. So you had an expanded version?
Yeah, that would, that, that we've covered, because it's in here.
Mm-hmm.
What we didn't cover was, uh, was the tax collector dealing with, with, uh, some of his clients that are not yet in that situation of asking for an abatement, or, but they may be delinquent or approaching delinquency in, in the second or the third payment term because of a COVID-related reason. Then they, the people, would be eligible for
Yes.
replacement of mortgage payments or whatever, which would then give them the ability to meet their obligations.
So the mortgage, yeah, that's.
Without having to go through the abatement process.
Well, of course, mortgage payments wouldn't apply in the abatement process anyway. Um, so, I mean, if you go into, I, I think that's correct. I think that, yes, they may be eligible for mortgage payments. However, if you heard JP's earlier request, it's, you know, these, well, these are a lot of small, good things. Let's wait and see on the the highway or the public service garage. Garage is not, well, it is. Um, the abatement thing would put money back into the town coffers immediately. So that one, I think we could move forward on. The, taking ARPA money for mortgage payments, while it's allowable, and, and maybe JP will wanna address whether we go down that route right now.
Well, no, the point is, if the people are eligible, then why wouldn't we give them the money?
Well, I think it's premature. We have to have some sort of screening process that probably have to be vetted by Kevin, uh, that meets some sort of evidentiary standard and some way to verify, I guess, if those were in place, but again, that's, we've got plenty of time to figure out how we're gonna do this, and I would be reluctant to suggest to anybody that the Board would approve that type of arrangement at this point in time.
That doesn't preclude Jim from finding out if there are people that may be eligible.
Well.
Absolutely, absolutely not, or people that may be interested, absolutely not.
Right, right. So, but particularly on the tax abatement part, because that money will come back to the town. Right, okay.
And, and.
And that's really all Jim can address anyway, really, as delinquent tax collector.
You were, uh, Don was just mentioning for the upcoming, um, they're in a possible inability to, to pay the, the coming January or May. they're in a possible inability to, to pay the, the coming January or May payments, you were saying? Um, I have no connection with any of that. I can only deal, I only deal with the people who are already delinquent.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
If you want to address that, that would, that would have to be on the, the clerk of treasure.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Now, I can talk with the people who are delinquent now.
And have been.
They're having issues.
Right.
You know, I've, I've worked with a number of, um, my clients to get them to be giving me money, but make sure that they take care of their current year taxes so they don't get slammed with another 8% and just keep pushing themselves back. So, you know, there's, there is, um, a number of folks who are, are making that effort to, uh, pay the current year taxes and continue to give me money, but it isn't necessarily as much as they were expecting to because they're trying to get ahead of the, ahead of the snowball it's chasing.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, well, let me just conclude by saying that, uh, when I look at the millions and the billions of dollars that are being expended by the federal government and through us and through the state and the county and our million two, that when I consider that there may be individuals out there, citizens of this town who are put in a situation through no fault of their own of unemployment because of COVID inability to take care of their obligations because they lost a job or can't work because of COVID in any way. That that would be probably the most appropriate use of limited funds because it's not, I don't believe in any case going to be a tremendous amount of money to us. But it may very well be a saving factor for somebody who's in a pretty serious situation. And I, and that's the least that we could do for them, I think. So. Well, that's why I want to go forward with that. And I agree with JP that we, we got to be careful as we do it, but still.
Well, I think the consensus is that it's okay, certainly on the tax portion. The mortgage portion, I don't know whether your remarks extended that, Don, but we don't have a program set up for that yet. We don't have any program set up. Um, but certainly as to the, the tax portion.
Programs for that, Mary.
That's true. Yeah.
There's all kinds of state programs.
And there's, there's, uh, rental, rental programs in place for that as well.
Right.
Okay. Good discussion. Um, let, I, let's see. So we're down to one last thing, which is, uh, personnel issue in executive session. And is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'm going to the little girl's room.
Oh, yeah. Well, let's do the motion first, and then we'll take a five-minute break before we go into.
Okay. So move.
Motion's made. Is there a second? There's no second. Um, the motion fails to carry, so there is no executive session. Is there any further business to come before the, the board?
Move to adjourn.
Motion's made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in the second. And all in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
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 Thank you.